I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening and welcome. We'll begin tonight's meeting with recognitions. Dr. Cates.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. I'd like to ask Associate Superintendent Dr. Lisa Small to introduce some wonderful coaches and students to us.
Thank you. Board of Education and Dr. Cates, thank you for taking the time this evening as we honor two fine student athletes from Fremont High School. Ladies, as your coach introduces you, please come up by the podium. And parents, I invite you to stand as your child is introduced also. Assisting with the awards tonight are Doc- is David Dick, Athletic Director from Fremont High School. It is now my pleasure to introduce Scott Newmark. Scott is in his sixth year as a world language teacher at Fremont High School. Scott has coached girls tennis at Frem now for five years and has just completed his first year as head coach. Scott was a successful college tennis player at Butler University, earning Big Ten Conference honors. Scott?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Superintendent Dr. Cates, President Burke, the entire District 211 Board, our Principal Kurt Teniper, Athletic Director David Dick, the entire Frem athletic department and my coaching staff for their support on a terrific 2018 girls tennis season. Tonight, I want to introduce and honor the MSL Conference Champions, the Sectional Champions, and fourth place Illinois State Doubles Team sophomore Kira Manulides and freshman Akari They are accompanied tonight by their parents, Michelle and Spiro Manulides and Kyoko and Ken Matsuno. All four parents showed incredible enthusiasm throughout the season, and I'm so grateful for their involvement. Akari and Kira posted a tremendous 44-2 record during this year's campaign while performing at extremely high level, not only on the court, but also in the classroom. Both Akari and Kira made an overwhelming impact on me as their coach, and I could not be any more proud of how they represented themselves, their families and Fremont High School. At such young ages, they were able to overcome the spotlight that was shown on them during the fall in order to create a formidable doubles team. I want to sincerely congratulate both of you on a tremendous accomplishment.[176.01][176.01](applause)
Each year, the Illinois State Board of Education sponsors the Those Who Excel Awards to honor individuals who have made significant contributions to public schools throughout the state. Tonight, I am extremely proud to recognize several District 211 individuals who have been honored for their professional contributions, leadership, and community service. Each of our Those Who Excel Award recipients will receive a crystal apple similar to the one that we have displayed here. We will recognize our honorees in alphabetical order, so when I call your name, please come forward and stand next to the podium. First, we'll have Board President Mrs. Musia Burke.[227.65][227.65](applause) Our first recipient is Board of Education President Musia Burke, who was recognized in the School Board Member category. Elected to her first term on the Board of Education in 2011, Musia has been a strong advocate for District 211 students. She has been a dedicated public servant dating back long before her service in District 211, beginning with her involvement with the PTA when her children were younger. One school administrator commented that Musia's leadership and care for all students set the standard for school board members and community volunteers to follow. A recent District 211 graduate called Musia a role model for students who needed a positive adult in their life. She also has been called a voice for students who are hesitant to use their own while being a leader for all. Continuously over many years, Musia has demonstrated that her decisions and actions are centered on students. Musia, thank you for your leadership and dedication to District 211, and congratulations Next is Yasi Delgado, recognized in the School Administrator category.[310.45][310.45](applause) As Student Services Director at Schaumburg High School, Yasi coordinates a variety of programs designed to help students navigate the high school experience. During her time at Schaumburg, she has been described as "the glue that keeps the community of our faculty and staff together," with her work in overseeing student scheduling while balancing classroom sections. A parent who saw her daughter struggling with attendance and classroom performance came to Yasi for help. She said that while Yasi was direct with her daughter, she was also very empathetic and got to the heart of what was going on and was able to help turn things around quickly. A graduating senior student who turned to Yasi after not being admitted to her top college choice said that Yasi helped her think positively in seeing that there were greater things in store for her, just at a different school. Yasi, in your dedication to the students at Schaumburg High School, you exemplify what makes District 211 great. Thank you for all that you do, and congratulations on this award.[373.53][373.53](applause) Fremont High School Social Studies Teacher, Dr. Loriann Friere.[391.41][391.41](applause) Loriann was not only recognized in the Classroom Category Teacher category, she was also named among the top 10 finalists for the State's Teacher of the Year. Loriann has said that she has a firm commitment to every member of the school community. Part of that commitment has been the creation of an AP community that provides an opportunity for students to meet before school in order to network and build further support systems. One student described the AP community as "an encouragement for students to value the overall well-being of each other." A fellow colleague described Loriann as a mentor after spending a year teaching alongside her and referred to it as "one of the most rewarding professional development experiences of her career." A parent recalled how, after her child missed two weeks of school, Dr. Friere met with the student and designed a personal program that would allow him to catch up on assignments and tests he had missed. Loriann, thank you for your hard work and the dedication you have shown to students at Fremont High School. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor and the Those Who Excel Award.[463.81][463.81](applause) Next, we have the Palatine High School Home Room Team.[478.12][478.12](applause) When Palatine High School implemented a 12-minute daily home room in 2013, the goal was to create a consistency in communication surrounding school-wide activities. It has evolved to include encouraging shout-outs, broadcasts of the student-anchored Palatine TV, competitions, fundraisers, and a host of other activities. A parent of two Palatine High School students noted the sense of camaraderie the home room team has created, saying, "As a parent, my favorite part of home room is seeing the relationship and trust that my kids built with the teachers who oversee the classroom." One teacher stated that the home room team offers PHS the support it needs to make a more positive environment for stronger connections with our students. When I call the names of the members of the Palatine Home Room Team, please come forward to receive your crystal apple. First is Jessica Alicio, who now is at Schaumburg High School, actually.[545.66][545.66](applause) Tom Oken, who is now at Conant High School.[593.82][593.82](applause) Congratulations to this team and for all the work that they've made in the impact at Palatine High School. Our next honoree is Emily Pilguy, who is recognized in the Early Career Educator category.[662.63][662.63](applause) Emily is an example of how great teachers inspire students to become great teachers. A 2010 graduate of Palatine High School, she returned to Palatine High School in 2015 as a Family and Consumer Science teacher. After graduating from Illinois State University, she said she couldn't wait to take her learning experiences back to her old Palatine High School classroom. In addition to teaching, Emily is also the junior varsity color guard coach, cheerleading coach, and the sponsor for the student-run Latte Sweets Cafe that operates at the school during the spring semester. Emily has been described as a teacher who is always excited and happy to teach. One student enrolled in early foods class described in order to fill a void in her class schedule. Though the student said she had no initial interest in the subject, Emily's enthusiasm is what inspired her to continue, and that student is now taking the highest level of foods class that we offer. A parent of a color guard member said Emily was able to bring out more self-confidence, camaraderie, and a love of being part of things greater than herself in her child. Emily, thank you for your passion to your alma mater, and congratulations on receiving Our next awardee is Conant High School Nurse Donna Smeltzer, who was recognized in the Student Services Personnel category.[754.82][754.82](applause) Donna realized her desire to become a nurse at a young age. While attending Conant High School, she completed her senior survey volunteer hours at Alexium Brothers Hospital. After several years working in various hospitals, she decided she wanted to work as a school nurse and realized that dream in 2007 when she was hired as Hoffman Estates High School's nurse. Five years ago, she returned to her alma mater at Conant High School. One of Donna's colleagues commented that she has seen in Donna an unmistakable passion for her profession, and she always demonstrates professionalism along with sensitivity. A recent Conant High School graduate said that Donna was her go-to person whether she was not feeling well, if she was feeling anxious, or needed assistance following surgery. For all you do for the well-being of our students, thank you, Donna, and congratulations Our final honoree is Andrew Wolbecker, who was recognized in the Educational Service Andrew was also a District 211 graduate who returned to serve in the school he attended growing up. While attending Hoffman Estates High School from 2002 to 2006, Andrew built strong relationships with teachers, staff, and coaches, as well as his fellow students. In 2016, he returned to the school where he now serves as a Title I Attendance Interventionist, as well as the Assistant Varsity Baseball and Assistant Freshman Football Coach. A fellow teacher who has had the opportunity to watch Andrew as both a student and a teacher said that Andrew interacts with staff and students the same now as he did when he was a student. And he added that the mentoring program Andrew created has fostered many strong relationships between teachers and at-risk students. Andrew, thank you for all you do for our students, and congratulations on receiving this Those Who Excel Award.[881.44][881.44](applause)
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank, congratulate everybody here this evening, particularly our student athletes and our Those Who Excel winners. We'll take a short recess to allow for some photographs, and then we'll resume with our business portion. As a friendly reminder, if you could just state your name, if you'd like a response from the superintendent, to also leave a number, and that Mr. Kovak has a timer, and that we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. No responses needed. And my concerns tonight, and why I'm here, is to address Christianity in the workplace of District 211 and multiple sclerosis, which Marta has. There's different stages of multiple sclerosis, which you may or may not be aware of, and it's one I really want to get to, and I will get to it as I watch the clock. But the first thing I want to talk to you about is I was- it was brought to my attention that I had a situation at the school that needed to be addressed, and they started with this incident from 2016, and I want to read what happened here so you understand. This was by Dr. Small, a very good man. This letter is to document the meeting that occurred at 8:20 Friday, December 16, 2016, between Steve Herman and General Maintenance Person, Robert Small, Principal Mark Langer. Mr. Herman was at School of Fellowship of Christian Athletes when he- after the meeting, he requested to talk to Dr. Small about an incident that happened the night before. He stated a female student was walking in the halls at Conant at 10:30, and I asked her what she was doing. She said she had a long story, she had nowhere to go, and anyways, short of it is, I brought her down to the maintenance area. But I was told, while I was on the clock, to drive that girl home in my personal vehicle. That should have never happened. It should have not happened. I was told to drive that girl home, but they- Mr. Langer started the situation with this letter, so that's why I wanted to bring it up. Now, on the bottom of the letter, it says, "Dr. Small also told Mr. Herman not to talk about religion with students and explain that taxpayers, church, and state, and there was no- there was no discussion. Nothing came up about religion with the girl or anybody at the time." But my point is, I should have never drove that girl home. I shouldn't have been put in that position. The foreman makes the calls. I shouldn't have been put in that position. The follow-up is, I got- it's also on those packets, I was- did Fellowship of Christian Athletes for five years, and I was told not to do Fellowship of Christian Athletes anymore. We did- we did a lot of good in Fellowship of Christian Athletes. We did Thanksgiving dinners. We fed the poor, but for no reason, I was terminated from doing that anymore. So after- since the clock is running, I wanted- after all that was done, I was told, "Steve, you're going to go home with pay." I said, "Okay." He said, "So I went home." I got a call an hour later, it said, "Steve, we need your keys." I said, "Well, we're just about going to Ricardo's restaurant." He said, "Well, I'm going to send the foreman to get your keys." I said, "Okay, well, that's okay. If you need the keys that bad, then you do that." So what happened is, the foreman didn't- the foreman came, but they came with the largest truck we have. They pulled up in front of the doors to Ricardo's restaurant, blocking the doors and demanding my keys. Now, she has MS. She has double vision, and stress on her is completely horrible. And honey, tell them how you felt. Marta, tell them.
Yeah, you know, this was not nice. I was very afraid in this moment because whole situation at school make me lot of stress. Steve tell me, let's go to restaurant tonight, you need relax a little bit. We go to restaurant, we just buy the car, and then came, like Steve tell, with huge I was surprised, what's going on here? I was afraid, and it was very cold in this moment, very windy. My traverse was very bad after this.
Okay, honey.
Later I start choking, was terrible.
Okay, okay, okay. So this should never happen. It should have not happened. The keys could have been taken from me at the school. Now, you wouldn't like this if this was somebody you loved, and the district trucks should not be used as police vehicles. Those keys could have been gotten in a different way. You can't- you can't do this. I mean, they can't do this. That shouldn't have happened. That shouldn't have happened. If she could- I had to take her to the doctor, I actually had to get a letter from the doctor saying, "You know what? You keep away from her because this could actually, if you know anything about multiple sclerosis," I don't know if you do or you don't. She has a serious case of it. It sends her into choking. It could- it could have done that. Now, we have a lot of witnesses to this, and my point is, thank you, that shouldn't have happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, honey.
Wait.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night. The next person that we have to speak in front of the board is Mr. John Parker.
I don't really have anything prepared to say tonight, so I'm just going to kind of talk off the cuff, and whatever happens, happens. My reason for addressing the school board for the last 10 years, 11 years that I've been following this, has always been how much it costs for a high school education here in Schaumburg, Palatine, Hoffman Estates, District 211. It's about $90,000 per student. It's kind of tough to figure into pension costs, and I know right now we're in the negotiation for the salaries for the administration and teachers that work here, and that makes up about 80% of your $258 million budget. What I was wondering, Mr. Rosenbaum, I think he got appointed because of his experience with contracts. Well, then, why is Anna Klimkowitz sitting in on the meetings? Anna, if you could answer that, that would be helpful. I also had a- I was kind of wondering about Mr. Rosenbaum's comment on the school buses, explaining them as efficiencies or cost-cutting. But I'm not sure how an $80,000 school bus, it gets a little bit better gas mileage, maybe has a couple more safety features, is 10 years newer, that costs $80,000, is saving anybody any money?
I don't think that was.
If you want a new school bus. Then say you want a new school bus, and then you buy them, but that doesn't save anybody any money. Because my car or my motorcycle is 30 years old, and I go out and buy a new one, it doesn't really save me any money. It gets me a new car or a new motorcycle, but it doesn't save any money. So I just was kind of taken back over there. Ed Young. I've noticed you dozing off at some of the meetings, and, you know, I don't know if it's- if you're just overworked during the day or whatever, but I just wrote you personally because you said that you would go get a beer with me at the one meeting where I spelled your name wrong in the newspaper. And I wrote you, but I never got anything back. And what I was wondering about you is, a lot of people have asked you, that I know that you owe a considerable amount of money in back taxes. I was wondering if there's any truth to that? And if it is true, and it's a considerable amount of money, how can we trust you to actually have a vote on a $258 million budget when you're- what sounds like you're in debt pretty good? Anna Klimkowitz. I've watched you for 10 years, pretty much say the same thing at the end of the year. "Well, next year, and we're going to look at efficiencies, and we're going to all these buzzwords and kind of pie in the sky hopes for next year," but never really take any action. And there was one thing I would like you to talk to, because I've heard Ms. Burke and you talk about respect, several times. Respect, respect, respect. When you get the chance, could you guys talk together and tell me who Eric Calder is? I would really like to hear that from you. Dan Cates. I think you're a good guy, I really do, but I've heard, and I've gotten a lot of answers from a lot of letters that I've written to you, and other people have described your replies as elegant arrogance. You kind of talk down to people a little bit, you don't really answer the questions, you're just floating it off. You know, "John, that was a nice letter, you know, goodbye, see you later." I just- it doesn't really- you're better than that. Will Henshaw. I gave you back your sign because though you were successful in reducing the excess cash the district has, you haven't figured out how to get it back to the people that paid it. And the only way you can do that is with a reduction in the levy, a reduction in the levy extension. Robert LaFever. I love that smirk, Bob. I've seen it for a long time, and it is- it's an arrogant smirk, but I love it. I mean, it's just you. At your last meeting, you were very persistent that the school district is debt-free, correct? You- that just doesn't happen. These are your words. "It just doesn't happen." Your auditor said, "Holy smokes." You know, he was taken back. Debt-free. A funny thing happened to me, in a way, to the Trickster Gallery for voting this weekend, or a couple days ago. I was walking past the Administration Building of District 54, so I walked in, and I said, "Are you guys debt-free?" And they said, "Yes." They actually had their Chief Financial Officer call me on the phone to confirm that District 54, right here in Schaumburg, is debt-free. So is it just arrogance, or is it ignorance? It is. All right, thank you. Both. I agree. Pete Dombrowski.
Thank you.
Though we're not friends.
Mr. Um-
I know. Can I have 10 seconds more? I got one guy left to go, and then I'm done.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
We're going to make it 10 seconds.
Pete Dombrowski. Though we're not friends, we talk occasionally. We disagree on a lot of things. The one thing I can say about Mr. Dombrowski is when he talks and he disagrees with me, he presents his arguments back to me with verifiable facts and logical reasoning. I don't see that from anybody else here watching your discussion at the meeting last month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. That concludes our citizens appearances. That'll bring us to our presentation. Dr. Cates?
See, we're going to do that during the levy portion of the-
All right, sorry. All right. I apologize for that, and we're going to move on to our consent agenda. The suggested motion is that our consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mrs. Burke.
Aye. This brings us to our special reports. We have our Freedom of Information Act requests. Any questions or comments? We also have our Fall Curriculum Committee Report for 2018-2019. The suggested motion is that the Curriculum Committee Report and recommendations be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? We also have our placement testing of incoming freshmen. Any questions or comments? We have our 2018 School Report Cards. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education directs the superintendent to post the 2018 School Report Cards to the district and school websites no later than November 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? We have our Property Tax Appeal Board Refund Report. This is for your information. Any questions or comments? We also have our Illinois High School Association Letter of Appreciation, of Recognition. This is for your information. Any questions or comments? Brings us to our unfinished business. Our Life Safety Survey. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the Life Safety Amendments for Palatine, William Fremd, James B. Conant, Schaumburg, and Hoffman Estates High School as submitted, and further authorize the superintendent to file the Life Safety Survey with the Regional Office of Education and Illinois State Board of Education for review and approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
One sec. If- when we file it, it starts that 10-year window, so- So we're not discussing any options relative to holding off or, I know that that was one of the options we discussed at the last board meeting, but it, it looks like we're just gonna proceed then. That's, that's the intent of this board.
Right? I mean, we're gonna file it and you're gonna answer the, when the clock starts?
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure if the question was if the board wanted to file it or what happens with the clock. So. Well, I know that we were discussing last meeting. Yes. That we could hold off a year to file this. I know that most of the recommendations suggest that these be done immediately within the first three to five years, so we would be then, I, I assume that would be the plan, that most of the life safety then would be completed well before twenty twenty-five if we submit as we're motioning at the moment. So in terms of the sequence, I can answer that part and then if the board chooses some other timing of whether they would like to file it or not, that would be for the board. So our project sequence here does include these projects and whether they are included as part of the Life Safety Survey project or not, we are thinking we're gonna need to start them. It, it is really a matter of timing in terms of the filing of the survey itself. But there are projects that are now in need to be completed and we will be proceeding with that work. Whether the board chooses to file the report or not would be another, you know, another sequence. Right. The vote we're taking now is to file the report. That is correct. Okay. And then some of these things, obviously, I think the intent would be to start like CO detectors probably internally with staff. Is that correct?
The vast majority of the work would be contractor work. The CO detectors, the, the nature of that work is really to tie it into the existing fire system, so it's more of a, the, the wiring, if you will, component. We do have battery-operated units that are in place, but this would be to tie those into the, the unit or the system itself, so that would be contracted work. And if there are projects that we are able to accomplish, certainly with many of these projects, the, the timing of them requires that they are done in the summer and, and therefore we are, we typically have that be contracted work that is completed.
I'll piggyback on that. Is there a timing requirement to file? To, to Pete's point, you know, to, to do the filing, you know, are approving it to be filed? If we approve it tonight to be filed, is there a timeline within which that needs to be done?
So the, the survey must be filed at a minimum of once every ten years. Once we file the survey, submit it to the State Board of Education and Regional Office of Education for review, we expect that it will take four to six months for them to get back to us with approval of those projects. And once we have approval, then we are required to begin completing projects that are identified within a six-month period of time. So there are a number of projects that we would otherwise be completing this summer, which are also listed on the survey and we would be in compliance with that should we receive approval late spring, mid to late spring.
So there are some items on the survey that could be started even before they're approved to be by the, by the state level, correct? Because the state might not, we might not get to starting these if we relied on that for as much as a year from now.
That is correct. So a few examples of that would be Hoffman Estates High School is scheduled to be closed this summer. We are looking at doing some roof repair work over there, which would be areas that are identified on the Life Safety Survey. Another example is the domestic water system that is at Palatine High School, which is about forty years old. And we are, it is not a redundant system and we are at a point where we are recommending that that would be done this summer as well. Just considering the, the age and condition of it and to put in a, a redundant system in place of it to allow that building to have, to meet its needs that way. So those are a few examples of the projects that we would look to complete this summer.
Is it expected that everything on here is gonna be approved?
Typically, we have found that approximately eighty to ninety percent of the projects are approved. I can't say how they go about that. There doesn't seem to be much rhyme or reason in past surveys that we have reviewed or in working with our architects or engineers, but that tends to be about the, the percentage that we see as, as far as an approval rate.
And we don't need their approval to necessarily do any of these things?
That is correct. The approval from the state is really to, should the district pursue bonds to pay for those projects, it would only be in the amount of the approved projects.
Thank you.
Can you remind us why they call it a life safety survey and why you're required to do it every ten years?
As codes change and as buildings get older, they check to see what is still within the code. And so each of these items have been designated as not falling within the code. And so our ability by paying for them out of our own funds, if you will, allows us to proceed with them whether they are included on the survey or not. It allows us to, you know, to complete the projects, but once you enter into the life safety approval and approved list, then they are mandated, that they must be completed. So, but each of the items identified have been identified as not meeting the code.
The school code?
There are certain areas of building code that are, and it's areas that would be otherwise at their general life expectancy and we would be looking to touch them. And when you're similar to, if you're doing improvements in your home and your, that particular area may not be up to code, you would have to bring it up to code during that work. So the, the purpose of the sur- survey is just that, to make sure that your buildings are safe and have fire safety components that, that are in those, in your facilities to ensure that your students are in a a safe environment while they are with us.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Henshaw.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mrs. Burke.
Aye. We have our twenty eighteen proposed tax levy truth and taxation resolution and property tax relief grant. And this is where, presentation now, we're.
Yep.
Found it. For the second time.
So we wanted to present information to you about information that we received from the state in the last sort of week. It was, I think, October thirtieth, actually, and when that came out, it was part of the law, but it, the state had not clarified what characteristics, what some of the necessities of implementing it would be. So they issued this notice to school districts and the day we received it is the day that we called them. And we were actually able to catch a consultant after hours. Since that time, we've been working to pull together a lot of information to communicate to you about our interest in finding some relief that allows us at the same time to provide taxpayer relief while also maintaining the plan that we are on financially. The financial plan that we have set in motion is very successful. It has achieved a position to where we have paid down a great deal of our reserves. We have prudently and wisely optimized many of our resources. We have reached a point as, you know, Mr. Dombrowski, I think, emphasized down there, that we also are, and Mr. Lefever emphasized in previous conversations that we are debt-free. We have mentioned that here several times. And our interest is to stay on that plan, to be able to fund our projects, our life safety projects, our capital projects, and so that we can continue to operate as efficiently as possible. So the recommendation we have is for a levy amount that would maintain that path that we are currently on. In addition then, what we have proposed is a submission of a grant that would provide taxpayer relief. It would go beyond the amount of the levy. And to pay for that, we would be using some proceeds of the land sale that have not yet, has not yet occurred. So to help you to understand this somewhat new and multiple moving pieces of this current and recent bit of news, I thought it would be helpful to have a fresh presentation of the information here this evening. So with that, I'm gonna let Lauren take us through the first part.
Thank you very much. We are pleased to be able to present tonight to share some additional information on the Property Tax Relief Grant. There is information that is included in the levy report as well and a motion that incorporates the Property Tax Relief Grant. So we would like to be able to walk through the details of the grant and provide you with a greater understanding as to its potential impact on District two eleven as we consider the two thousand eighteen levy. Through the state's new evidence-based funding system, a grant is now available that allows approved school districts the ability to reduce their two thousand eighteen operating levy and in turn receive grant funds in a proportional amount reduced. In other words, the state is allowing school districts the ability to reduce their levy, lessening the amount requested from taxpayers and receive a portion of these funds by way of grant so that they may continue to receive the revenue that's necessary to support their operations. As Dr. Kate shared, information on this grant was released just last week. The state's grant for fiscal year nineteen includes an allocation of up to fifty million dollars in property tax relief funds and those are made available to qualifying school districts. So how does the Property Tax Relief Grant work? A school district must continue to follow the prescribed timeline for a proven and following filing its two thousand eighteen levy. We've provided numerous details on this in the past, but as a recap, for our district, the board will set the amount of the two thousand eighteen levy tonight. And that will be followed by formal adoption of the levy at the December meeting. And then, following adoption, it must be filed with the county clerk's office by no later than December twenty-fourth of two thousand eighteen. As I mentioned in tonight's board materials, there are two motions for consideration. One is to set the levy amount and one is to approve completing the Property Tax Relief Grant application. Once the two thousand eighteen levy has been approved, school districts must apply for the Property Tax Relief Grant with the State Board of Education by no later than January seventh. The State Board of Education would then determine grant recipients in a rank order and publish the final list of grantees by no later than March first. Districts awarded with a grant must file an abatement with the county clerk's office by no later than March thirtieth. And once the abatement application is finalized with the county clerk, districts will receive a predetermined proportion of their awarded grant funds by way of state aid in May or June this year. Barb will go into much more detail on this in future slides. We've previously discussed the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law and the limitations that it places on school districts. One of the greatest limitations of this law is that it prohibits school districts from being able to reduce their levy without a compounding loss effect of revenue into the future. Under the Property Tax Relief Grant, school districts that are subject to PTEL may abate their levy for one year and one year only and recover the reduction in next year's levy amount should they choose, therefore not producing a compounding loss effect. The district receives the majority of its state aid through evidence-based funding, which replaces the former general state aid. As we have reviewed with the board in past meetings, the district receives an amount of evidence-based funding in year one under the new formula, which then became its base funding minimum. The base funding minimum is a hold harmless level of funding that is guaranteed to the district. Each year, districts across Illinois receive additional revenue beyond their base funding minimum according to their financial need. Property Tax Relief Grant Funds are paid out as additional state aid this fiscal year. This amount is added to a district's base funding minimum and paid as evidence-based funding. As the law is currently written, these funds will be included in a district's future hold harmless calculations. So how is a school district's potential grant amount determined? The state calculates each school district's maximum grant amount and the percentage of the maximum grant amount that the district is eligible to receive using a calculation on the amount of the abatement and the district's local capacity. For District two eleven, we may receive sixty-five point four percent of any amount abated that would be paid in the form of a grant. So as an example, for every one million dollars of abatement, the district would receive six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in grant funds. The district would not receive the remaining thirty-five percent of funds through the grant or the levy and would therefore be required to make up these funds elsewhere for use in the, this year's operating budget. As an example, that was provided earlier by Dr. Cates, potentially through the use of the land sale proceeds. The total tax relief allowable under the grant is capped with a unique amount for each district in the state. For us, this is calculated as point three-one percent of our two thousand sixteen EAV, which calculates to about twenty-three point five million dollars. And as Lauren stated, we would be eligible to receive sixty-five point four percent of that back in the form of a grant or about fifteen point four million dollars. We're not required to apply for the maximum amount of relief. We just wanted you to know that this amount is capped for each district in the state and it is a unique amount for each district. Any district in the state may apply for this grant, however, the state has only appropriated fifty million dollars in total to fund all the districts combined. So how do they decide which districts are actually going to receive this money? The state has put together a list of the adjusted tax rates for all districts in the state and ordered them from high to low. Grant money will be distributed first to the applicant district, which is highest on the list. Once their grant request is fulfilled, they'll move down to the applicant with the sec- with the next highest tax rate and move down until all fifty million dollars has been used up. The state has already published this list and it has also calculated the maximum allowable grant for each district. And remember, this is unique for each district. There are twenty-seven districts on the list ahead of us, which could potentially receive the funding. The combined maximum grant for these twenty-seven districts is fifty-five point nine million dollars. So if all of these twenty-seven districts applied for the maximum amount of the grant, there would not be any funds available for us. However, remember, this grant is a unique calculation for each district. And while this grant is attractive to many districts, it is not advantageous for all districts to file for this grant. We feel we have an excellent possibility of being awarded some funds under this grant and we do recommend that we apply. So let's talk about how much money we recommend abating and how we would apply for this grant. We have recommended adoption of the levy at a two-point-four percent increase over the prior year or two hundred and twenty-eight point seven million dollars and we stand firm on this recommendation. We listened at the last board meeting and heard you say that you're interested in how we could reduce our levy increase by half or two-point-six-five million. And this became the basis for our recommendation tonight. If we were to apply for a Property Tax Relief Grant in the amount of seven point six-five million dollars, meaning we would abate this much under the provisions of the grant, assuming funding was available, we would receive five million dollars in grant funds. We would then have to cover the difference between the abatement of seven point six-five million and the five million dollars in grants funds. This would be two-point-six-five million and as Dr. Kate indicated, we would recommend designating a portion of the land sale proceeds to cover this gap. This recommendation provides seven point six-five million dollars of relief to taxpayers or three times the amount of relief provided if we filed a levy with half of the recommended increase. It does this by using two-point-six-five million dollars of proceeds from the sale of our land and five million dollars from the grant. This is the same dollar amount commitment by the district as if we filed a reduced levy. However, the big benefit here is that we would have no compounding loss of tax dollars under PTEL like we would if we were to file a reduced levy.
like we would if we were to file a reduced levy. Also, the grant would be added into our funding, our base funding minimum. Remember, the base funding minimum is the minimum amount of state revenue we receive under the evidence-based funding model. Therefore, if we received the grant this year, we would continue to receive the same dollars awarded year after year, just in a different format. Instead of being part of a property tax reimbursement grant, it would simply be part of our general state aid. If we file for the grant and don't get an award, we are not required to file an abatement. If we get a partial award, we would recommend an abatement of a hundred and fifty percent of the award amount. As an example, if the state gave out forty-eight million dollars of relief ahead of us, and said, "We have two million dollars left for District two eleven", we would recommend abating three million dollars. The solution presented tonight is the only solution that affords the district the ability to stay on the financial path it has been set, to operate debt-free, to pay down our pension liabilities, to reduce our reserves while still protecting ourselves against the unknown, while still providing relief to taxpayers. This is the timeline of what will happen with the grant filing and awards over the next six months. The dates displayed in red require action either by the board or by administration. First, the board must approve the levy at the December meeting, and then we will file the levy by December twenty-fourth. We must turn in an application for the grant by January twenty-sept- by January seventh, which is a very simple form. They will notify us by March first if we will be receiving a grant. Um, they have also indicated that this grant, uh, list could come out as early as January thirty-first. We will need to file the abatement with Cook County at, by March thirtieth, which means that at the March board meeting, the board would need to pass a resolution to abate the funds. Um, when we expect to receive the grant proceeds at, as early as May, um, then they would be rolled into next year's state funding minimum, and we could re- start receiving them again, uh, as early as August of next year. That, we'd like to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for the second presentation of the evening. Um, we also saw at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and there were some questions there. Any additional questions or comments?
I would like to ask the same question, since not everyone was together then. Ki- you, you mentioned the twenty-seven districts ahead of us, and that their maximum, you know, is, is greater than the funds available. But you also said that it's not advantageous for all of them to, to request the funds. Can you explain why that is, and, you know, 'cause, since that sort of drives the fact that you think that our, uh, chances are pretty high?
As we mentioned, it is a unique calculation for each district. And while we're receiving sixty-five percent back in the form of a grant, there's some districts ahead of us on the list who are only going to receive thirty-five percent back in the form of a grant. So that doesn't make that as attractive if they have to cover two-thirds of the costs themselves. There's also districts on the list that might be receiving ninety percent back on the grant, but they might not have the financial wherewithal to cover that additional ten percent themselves. Um, we are rated by the district in the category four, which is the very top tier of state funding, but there's many districts, uh, within that twenty-seven above us who are tier one, who are really struggling financially and may not be able to make up that gap.
I wanna do the same thing as, as he just did, and that is, um, my question during the, the earlier meeting was, um, and, and I understand that the grant is not guaranteed. That's why you apply, and, in hopes that, and, and expectation that we'll get it. What would be, um, if you can reiterate for, for those here, um, the, the average, um, savings that having the grant, um, the tax relief grant actually provided to us would give to the average homeowner?
Uh, we calculate that if we were to provide seven point six-five million dollars of tax relief, that would equate to about seven and a half dollars per month for the average homeowner.
Um, although it's not required, as you mentioned, um, is the plan to apply for the maximum? You said we didn't have to apply for the maximum, but is that the intent?
No, the intent is to apply for seven point six-five million dollars of property tax relief.
Okay. And, um, and if we receive the, the grant and the money that we hope to, to be able to get, um, at what point would we, because the, we'd need, would this board need to approve, um, some of the proceeds from the sale to be included, as you had earlier mentioned, as part of this, um, overall abatement? Um, at what point would we need to be having that recommendation and then approval? Um, how would that fall into the, the timeline associated with the process here?
It would be a formal, uh, resolution the board would have to pass to actually abate the money. Uh, we have not yet sold the land, so you would have to follow that, and we'll know more about when that possible closing could be. We do not have a scheduled date for the closing. Um, but, uh, I would imagine they could fall near the same time, that you would be able to then have, uh, more clarity, um, you know, as you get closer to March.
Can you talk a little bit more about the tax relief? How will the taxpayers see that?
Uh, it will, it will just be a reduced total levy to them, so their total tax bill would be less. It will not be something that they would have to separately apply for. It will not be a separate line on their tax bill. It would just be less dollars levied for District two eleven.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. If we decide to approve a levy less than, than recommended, that has no impact on the grant application, we could still proceed as, as we wish?
That's correct.
And, and then abate that amount?
Correct.
Okay. Um, the abatement's only for a single year, is that correct? And then we either reapply for the grant if funds are available, we may move down the list, we may not. Then, after the abatement is levied, uh, prop- homeowners would see an, a spike then back, because it's just a single-year abatement. So it wouldn't be a, a long-term effect on their property bill, it'd just be that one year, potentially?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, um, the, the rate would then also not change on the property tax bill, just the amount minus the abatement, right? So whatever we approve would be in, 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 in the tax bill, you'd see the same rate?
The tax rate, is that what you're referring to?
Right. The rate wouldn't be affected by the abatement whatsoever.
The tax rate would be af- affected by the abatement. Um, there are other components that impact the tax rate, including the EAV. Um, but it would, it, it's a, um, calculation based upon your EAV and the amount of the levy filed. So you're, you're abating, so i- if we are approving a levy of two hundred and twenty-eight point seven mil- dollars and, um, abating seven million dollars off of that, the calculation for the tax rate would utilize the two hundred and twenty-one million dollars.
So then, when we file in December, we don't know if we're abating, but then we would do a modified application, and then that abatement would be impacted in the rate then. So the filing rate in December would change with the abatement. It wouldn't stay, and then it would just be reduced by the ba- okay, I understand, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you. We have, um, t- two suggested motions. We'll start with the first. The first suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution which sets forth the amount of two hun- two hundred and twenty-eight million, six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine, five hundred dollars as proposed twenty-eighteen levy for the Township High School District two eleven, and directs publication of a notice of public hearing on the proposed levy as it's, at its December thirteenth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Young?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. The second suggested motion is that the Board of Education authorize a superintendent to apply for the property tax relief grant that if received by the district would allow the board to abate the twenty-eighteen levy in the amount of seven point six million dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Brings us to our new business. We have our life, accidental death, and dismemberment, and long-term disability insurance renewal. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve a two-year contract with Standard effective January one, twenty-nineteen, for life insurance at a rate of thirteen and a half percents per thousand dollars of coverage for active members, and fifty-four cents per thousand dollars of coverage for retirees, accidental death, disam- dismemberment insurance at a rate of eighteen cents per thousand of coverage, and long-term disability insurance at a rate of six and a half per one thousand coverage as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, in looking over the, the renewal proposal, um, I had some concerns regarding the, the increase, um, in the life insurance area specifically. Um, seems pretty high. I'm not sure what, what averages are, or if it's common in the industry, or, or what have you. Um, but they seem pretty significant to me. And also, I was wondering, um, I don't know why we're going to a two-year versus a three-year that we had before. And a, a final question, and, and then, I guess we can answer them all, is, um, are we or have we considered, or can we consider, a co-op that might reduce our rates?
All good questions. We have asked those ourselves, and I'm gonna let Lauren respond to those.
Um, some additional information that I would provide on the rates themselves. Uh, you will notice that for our active, our basic life insurance, for our active employees, that we saw a, um, decrease, as well as a decrease in our long-term disability. The increase in our rates is, um, related to the retiree life insurance specifically. Um, and a couple of things of note with that. Our premium that we have paid over the past several years has been fifty percent of our claims experience. So we have, um, really fared well in our, um, premium that we've paid compared to our, our claims had we be, had been self-insured on that front. Um, the retiree life, in the past, they had blended that rate. Um, we received proposals from, I believe, ten, um, seven companies out of the ten that were sent, and none of them are blending rates anymore. Um, so that's where you see that, that increase. What I can tell you is that for the, um, while there is a thirty-one point four percent increase in the rate, we bill out. The board is not responsible for a portion of that cost. So, um, while we used to bill, um, it was equal to about fifty-five thousand dollars in retiree premium costs. Now with the increase, it, it is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in premium costs. So the board is not responsible for that full increase in premium cost. Um, the, in response to your question about the two-year versus three-year, um, the response that we received is we actually had an option of a two-year or a three-year renewal. The three-year renewal came with higher rates. They're expecting that, um, we may see some people decide to not elect to take retiree, to pay for retiree insurance anymore because the rate has increased. And they would like to see what it looks like after a two-year renewal, and hopefully we will get more favorable rates on that area of our, our coverage after the two-year time period. And regarding the co-op, um, we used to pool this insurance. Um, our co-op, um, went a different direction with it, and, um, it was not advantageous for us anymore to consider that as an option for us, and that's why we are marketing it on our own.
Thank you.
Any others? Roll call, please. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Any topics for potential? And this will bring us to our committee reports. We'll begin with Mrs. Klimkowitz and N S S C O.
Correct. For N S S C O, we met last night, and, um, our shining star moment, um, was, um, a little first grader who is blind. And she came to present to us a program that they had put together for White Kane Safety Day. And she's over at Westgate Elementary School in District twenty-five. And they put together a video. This little girl, uh, she was just a charmer, way, way too cute. And there was another, um, little boy that was with her. They, with their teachers, had put together a video on do's and don'ts of how you deal with people who have vision impairments. It was, it was absolutely phenomenal. They did that at the school. They had an opportunity for kids, um, who had no vision problems to be able to put on the goggles and be able to kind of experience what it's like to be, to be blind. Um, they did a phenomenal presentation. Um, a lot of, um, the little girl came up and, and she used her Braille, and she read a little response to us, and she was just definitely the shining star. Um, we also had the, um, Sarah Hartwick, who is the Ed Red Executive Director. She came and introduced herself to N S S C O. Um, spoke a little bit about what's going on. Kind of where we're moving forward with, with Ed Red, um, pensions, capital bills, some, some things that are gonna be coming up, so. And she seems like a very dynamic young lady. So we're looking forward to, to, to working with her. Um, another item that was presented was our continuous improvement plan. And they highlighted the student outcomes and student independence. Um, one of the teachers, who is the coordinator for the, um, the visually impaired, she gave a presentation about some of the student outcomes, uh, in regards to the, um, um, the vision pro- uh, uh, vision program. So not only do they have the core curriculum that they teach the kids, they also have some expanded services, which dealt with the orientation and mobility, um, self-advocacy, uh, compensatory skills such as accessing materials, the Braille, the magnification, a, a variety of things. So she talked about all of those things, and how they look at each of the students and help them achieve what they can achieve. Um, between trips on the bus, going out in the community, and so on. Some of the other things she talked about was, um, kind of a dashboard indicator, because N S S C O is looking to have, you know, what kind of results are they getting with, with the students? So this would be something that would be on the N S S C O website, so they're working on that. And, uh, one of the other items was the, um, fund balance. We, at the end of each of the, the year, the school year, there's a fund balance that's refunded to the member districts. So at this point, um, we've approved a fund balance of one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and two cents, and that's gonna be refunded to the member districts. Next month, we'll get the, the breakdown of what will come back to each of the, the school districts. We also have, moving forward with the, um, the gym for Timber Ridge. So we've been able, with monies that were set aside, um, are about four million dollars right now. So we're gonna go be, start going out, um, uh, to get some design developments and, uh, finalize some construction documents, uh, review the process with M, M W R D, uh, start working on the zoning review. Things that can be done prior to making certain that they've got all the money to be working on the gym for, for Timber Ridge. And lastly, um, N S S C O is having a Harvest Festival, which is going to be November tenth over at Sunrise, and that's from three to seven P M. So if you're available and would like to go over there and bring your family, you're more than welcome to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, um, Ed Red. I know, um, Mr. Dombrowski, and I know Mrs. Klimkowitz wanna say something, and possibly Dr. Kate, you know, whoever.
Yeah, the last meeting was on Friday, um, before the election. At that time, uh, some of the concerns that were described were, uh, three particular bills in the veto session that may come up, the P E bill, the, um, minimum wage bill, and then the cap on the, uh, teachers' pension spiking from six to three. They may, they may see some movement to try to remove that and, and move it back to six percent. Um, they spoke about Fred Crespo and pushing- Um, they spoke about Fred Crespo and pushing mental health initiatives and creating some bills for that within the education system. There was some concern that that might create unfunded mandates. Um, there's also some discussion and initiative, um, from the Ed Red Board to, um, pursue the the funding bill and the trigger for, um, referendum that's at a hundred and ten percent. Um, yeah, they spoke about that being a compromise in the bill, but it wasn't part of the intention of the bill. And then there was a lengthy presentation by Fritz Kegy, who's going to be coming in as the new Cook County assessor. So, um, he spoke about automating and and modeling Cook County after a lot of, uh, large municipalities and and, uh, creating the assessment system based on market value versus, um, equation. So he he's planning to post all of that information public, so if anybody wants to look at the code, um, it's also part of his intention, once he's in there, to make that available to districts so that we have the data when contesting and and appealing before the, uh, Board of Appeals. So that was the gist of the two and a half hour meeting on Friday.
Thank you.
Okay, if I may add to that, um, I did attend the the luncheon, it was about a month ago or so. And at that time, um, Sarah was asking about, uh, there's three committees that they would like to, uh, explore some more information and see how things are going. One was student discipline and I had volunteered to to be on that cause we did do an I A S B resolution a couple of years ago in regards to it. So Senate Bill, um, one hundred. So what I would like to ask is, um, I'm gonna send out an email to my fellow board members and to Dr. Kates, asking you for some of your input on your thoughts as to, um, our discipline, how things are going. Um, because what Sarah would like to do for this committee is get input from the different committee members who represent various schools um, as to, um, you know, what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses, basically a SWOT analysis. And then in probably, I would imagine, after the first of the year, talking maybe with some of the legislators, just to make certain that, um, if there are, um, legislation, if there is legislation that they would like to, uh, introduce, that we have a say in it. And just making sure that it's beneficial for our students and for for the schools. So that's kind of where we're at. So I'm I'm gonna send out an email and if you folks can respond back to me, I would truly appreciate it.
That gonna be in a form of like a open-ended question or more of a survey, pick A, B, C, or D?
It's going to be open-ended because I I just wanna get some input from you so I can, um, have some of your input, Dr. Kates' input, um, our school, how are things going with, um, the discipline that we have with our students? Um, you know, have we cut back on some of the suspensions, which I believe we have? Uh, we've addressed the needs for all of our students because it's important for them to be in school. Um, what are some of the strengths, what are some of the weaknesses? And I believe the intent is, let's be in front of this because we don't know what kind of, uh, legislation some of the legislators are gonna bring forward. I don't know, Mr. Dombrowski may have something more to add, I'm not certain.
From my perspective, unless there's an issue that's brought forth, it seems like we're kind of chasing a boogeyman on that issue. I mean, we we have legislation now regarding discipline, um, we track our discipline internally and we have those reports and, um, it it seems like kind of speculation to worry about what legislators may bring unless there's a specific Ed Red focus or or agenda item that we wanna pursue. Not sure what the what the purpose is. I mean, I don't think I would have any valuable input as we're not looking at discipline on a daily basis. That's just my thought.
I agree with that, but if Dr. Kates had or whoever else you have combed through all the stuff, I'd be happy to hear what you guys have to say.
Sure.
But I would assume if you have modifications that you think are appropriate based on the data that you get, that you just go with it.
Sure, yeah. Our our lead disciplines meet, uh, regularly and we'd be glad to provide a lot of feedback to you that would be helpful. You can take back to the committee in terms of what has worked and how we've seen effective change. Uh, we have, uh, for numerous years, uh, focused on reducing suspensions and and, you know, introduced a lot of the, um, uh, you know, means by which we help keep kids whole and, um, that has been very effective. And we would certainly be glad to share some of those practices and, um, you know, to share those with other districts as well. That's probably I think what the committee is looking for.
And it might not be fair because we have academies where we can relocate and focus attention, which all districts may not. So from our perspective, you know, our our controls on discipline may be unique compared to the rest and, y- you know, we, I I believe we we're in a very luxurious position with the with that regard. So I'm not sure if if we'd be really able to, you know, kind of empathize or relate to other districts that may not be so beneficial.
I think she's she's looking to be proactive because one of the conversations, I believe, you know, a couple of months ago was maybe doing away with school resource officers and just having more more counselors or something mental health. So, um, I personally find value in having our school resource officer because they do a variety of other things and, um, they also protect our students, they talk to our students. Um, I think they're they're of great value to us. So, um, I suspect she's trying to be just proactive and getting the input from a number of districts.
Well, I thank you for volunteering your services on that committee on behalf of, um, our district cause that's really what you're doing. And I agree, um, that I think the best information is already coming from the superintendent. I don't think I could provide anything other than my opinion and I don't know if that's of value, but, you know, cause it's an opinion whereas you get the facts and hopefully that would get you started. And if, I think if, once you guys meet and if you need more, you can come back to us. Does that make sense?
Okay, I just wanna make sure that everyone has an opportunity for for input if they would like. Okay.
Could we all just see the communication when you send it so that we're?
Yes.
Yeah, then we'd be like on the same page.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the report. Okay, there's, um, a couple announcements for your review. Facility reports, sorry, Mr. Young, I do that to almost every meeting. I apologize.
That's okay. Uh, unfortunately, the weather hasn't been kind to us this summer. Uh, the Conan Fields will not be completed this spring. Uh, more than likely, they'll be completed at the end of summer, so all the spring sports will probably be practicing and playing their games, uh, off-site. And then, uh, the front fields are gonna be ready, uh, are completed and will be ready for the spring. The other, only other project that we have going is the Hoffman Estates Media Center and that's scheduled to be completed in February.
Thank you, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, now you have your announcements. And then that'll bring us to entering closed session. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissa- dismissal of specific employees, matter relating to an individual student and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Administrative appointments. The suggested motion is that effective July one, twenty nineteen, Chiquis Gilbert be appointed as the Director of Summer School and Community Outreach for District two eleven at a gross salary of one hundred and fifty five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Um, second suggested motion, that effective July one, twenty nineteen, Karen Lasher be appointed as the Director of Business Services for District two eleven at a gross salary of one hundred and five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Suggested motion that effective July one, twenty nineteen, John Paulman be appointed as the Director of Facilities and Purchasing for District two eleven at a gross salary of one hundred and thirty one thousand, five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Termination of Steve J. Herman. The suggested motion that the Board of Education terminate the employment of operations and maintenance employee Steve J. Herman effective November eighth, twenty eighteen. Further, that the Board Secretary notify Steve J. Herman of the termination by certified mail.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Any meeting recaps? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.